Yeah. For November twenty fourth, six P M, Slough Court. So examination, there's no previous meeting minutes to examine tonight.
Jason.
Table that. Motion to approve Board number ten, accounts payable on wired payments. That was already signed, is that correct?
Yes, yes, I.
Okay, so the motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve Board number ten, payroll is being tabled at the moment. Okay, Ray, Highway, please, come on up.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Hope like your dress for a hunter.
Yeah, it'd be wonderful.
So, Ray, this is the document, right?
Yes.
The Dirt Pod Council. And this is related to.
Russell State project that I ended up putting forward. So this is the contract that we need to end up getting signed so we can go forward with getting the paperwork put together to end up having the paved swale and fifteen hundred feet of Russell's stage on that crib wall right out for the line, asphalted, joined together. Also, the inspection of the catch basins while we're down there, because we jumped ahead, we had time, safety was a big issue the past two years on that corner, we'd have an iceberg forming, you know, because there's no, water wasn't going anywhere. The side of the road was eighteen inches higher than the road.
Yeah.
So it's filled in over the years, lack of maintenance, the water had nowhere else to go but in the road.
No, we haven't done anything there.
Well, well, I, I, we backed and, you know, we trimmed the trees up on the top so that we don't have overhanging trees, that's something we do like every other year. But there's been no cleaning, that whole swale, the whole ditch line on Russell's stage from Paul Forestry all the way to the line is actually a paved swale that's under there. When Dave was here and I was doing ditch work up in that area, I ended up actually finding a catch basin, like, wait a minute, that's concrete. So I got a shovel out, started digging around it, well, there was a catch basin that was buried under probably, I would say, ten years. You know, material.
Cleaned out.
Got the upper part.
Yeah.
No, it's starting to break up and it's deteriorating, but I opened it up so at least the water would drain whatever's collected from all quarters to down. But it was very important before this winter that we ended up actually getting that level down on that corner, because if the water is just pooling up, you could even see the roads deteriorated because the water had nowhere to go. Also now, no, and we're not going to have that problem now because we dropped it down a good eight inches, you know, all the way down, and then near the catch basins themselves, we've got to drop close to a foot and a half, so. So I wanted to get this work done, it should have been done already.
Yeah.
But the problem, talking to Ellen and Laura, was they were so backed up with doing the collective bids for winter and the sand and salt and all the bids for the towns, they had no time to put together the package, even though how small it was. They said they would have to wait, so when I went up for the roundtable meeting this past two months ago, three months ago.
Yeah.
We ended up actually sitting down and talking, she asked, she was like, look, I know we told you we could do it, but is there any chance that we can end up putting this package together for springtime?
So Ellen is.
Yep, yep, Lauren and Ellen.
Okay, is there any way that we could have done it ourselves?
Uh.
Without using them? What's the, what's been the norm in Highway? Do they always go to Birdcock or?
No, this is such a small project, the time to go around, do the advertisement, get the procurement together, make sure every contractor comes up and looks at the job. It honestly would take up more time than it's worth, so in the contract, I, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to be an astronomical amount of money, for fifteen hundred dollars, they cover everything from the advertisement to the legal fees and everything, so we don't even need to end up having our lawyer draw anything up or anything, so at this point.
Basically, what you're telling us, this is a superintendent's call.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And this, this saves time so that I can get these other grants going, so that we can spread out some jobs in the town.
Right.
It's another tool in my toolbox, being a superintendent to use. You know, I don't want to ignore it because it's there for reasons, you know, to help superintendents, I'm not the only one that would be.
So what you need for us is to sign the document?
Yeah.
Exploded it, I'm just clarifying next, I was how to do it, right, because when we talked to you last, wanted to learn more of the paperwork stuff, well, this is part of that, absolutely, you're, you're leveraging Birdcock, but, you know, in the times when we tend to it, when it's like not as busy, I guess, should do it, right?
Oh, yeah.
Saves the town, but.
And I have no problem taking on projects in town, like I think many other people in town have seen, we're on one side of town, we're jumping to another. You know, we're multitasking all the time and we're getting stuff done, and I hope the community is happy and pleased with the Highway Department.
Well, well, we are, right, we've got a lot of problems on our work.
Great, will you be putting a swing or something over the drainage?
You mean when they're doing the work, or do you mean?
Afterwards, so that it doesn't, the like, the leaves don't all pile up there and become a problem.
So if you end up put, there, there's silk nets when you're doing construction, you drop in catch basins, but we're not going to be doing that. Whenever I even do a hand swell, like a paved swell, I make it myself, you always make like a catch dam before it goes into the basin itself. So you're driving by, you take a flathead shovel, go in there, scoop the stuff out, throw it out. Pretty much the maintenance of playing the catch basin is just flushing it out or even having a back truck suck it out, but, you know, and that is going to be part of that job too, is make sure that the basin itself is sound. I believe I gave you the scope of work that I ended up putting forward in the package.
I'm, you know, I'm not an expert in it, you are, so.
So. It just, it's just plain Jane all the way through from the width of the road to the road surface being milled an inch and a half, these are all the criteria that they need to know, so you inform them of what will end up hap- happening. Another one of my remarks is I just don't want someone going out there and saying, yeah, we can do the job unless I explain to them what I expect the job to look like at the end, so I know I'm not wasting money at the town, so all bidders must walk the project with the superintendent, that's a no brainer.
I just want to hear that, you know, the word has brought back that this is work that you could have possibly done, I understand you're busy, but, you know, we want to make sure that you know how to do it if you didn't have Birdcock doing it. And I'll be tight as it'll keep coming over, but let me just say that, okay?
Okay.
The more you can do stuff yourself, cheaper it is for you to use that money in other places, but you have to decide as we go along.
Well, this got approved by chapter ninety, so this isn't going to be coming, yeah, the fifteen hundred dollars is going to come out of my budget, but this project is going to, that's not going to be coming out of the budget, okay?
All right, so.
You want?
What else you got?
You have the, your list?
What at first?
You make a motion, we sign a motion.
Oh, make a motion to sign the.
To break, all in favor?
You have a copy?
Aye. Any discussion?
No, not really, I thought a bit.
I know, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anything else, Grant, have a mind?
Yeah, real quick, I just want to go over a few things. Grants came out, I ended up going to a couple meetings and we have an opportunity for the town to have up to a million dollars in construction grants approved through DOT with the right paperwork, the right mindset to chase this down, where we could get some projects that are halfway done, finished, now, that don't have the construction phase done already. So there's. Huh?
Such as?
Uh, the Beach Hill Bridge Project, honestly, we, I ended up speaking with Mark at DOT District One, I went up there and met him two weeks ago. We ended up speaking about some signage that needed to get put on Beach Hill for that bridge. The actual rating of the bridge went up, that was the reason why he called me in the first place, was instead of having the thirteen for the single axle for the tons, it actually is sixteen tons now for the single axle rating. So from a forty gross weight on that bridge, it went up to forty-two, so that's nice to hear, at least they didn't downgrade it, you know, versus going up, so.
What did you find out about the grants?
So, speaking with.
We love the word grant, by the way.
Well, I do.
We don't.
No. So they have, for the municipal small bridge grant that's out right now, there's six of them that came out this year, and I really would like, I'd really like to see if we can mirror this from the work that Gil Engineering already had, we got to work together, I want to make sure you're informed on it, we go over this, the chapter eighty-five paperwork got sent to the DOT, so the list that you said stopped, they have. And if they have the paperwork, they're going back and forth with Gil right now, fine tuning it. Even though we're not dealing with Gil, they're the ones that submitted the paperwork, so Mark said he's overlooking all the paperwork that they have up there for the application that they put in for the, for the actual of the construction, but the, all the studies that they did.
Yeah.
So, the engineer, thank you. So if we end up applying, we could end up getting the bridge fixed. And it's going to be under a million, I would hope, I would, I would hope. The number that I got told was what they were projecting for that bridge repair was five hundred
Yeah.
Five hundred and ninety, five hundred and ninety-six thousand, I believe.
So let's, let's go to grant for a second, like, have you ever done a grant?
No, but I was gonna, I was gonna actually ask you to sign one that I'm putting together right now for the Dirt Roads project, or if you can at least look it over and get it back to me. I really would like to end up getting the periods, get this taken care of. So they Grant Central simpler, made it so much simpler for, like, the key charts on how to apply for the grant, the certain aspects that you have to end up doing, what you're eligible for, what you're not eligible for, requesting fifty-fifty match, you know, sometimes you gotta end up contributing.
Connection that you can call on Prince?
I already have it, already using it, that's how I'm getting all this information.
No, you, you, you don't need to go through all the information, he needs to give you the approval to apply.
I understand, but I wouldn't want to do that till it's done.
No, no, you gotta do this first.
He can even apply.
I can't even apply for this and there's a.
It's not on our agenda, but.
Okay. If I can hand you this, I do have copies, you guys can look it over, I, I have all the information for the unpaved roads grant, not the bridge grant, because I still want to go over Mark on some stuff tomorrow on a phone call.
The copy and the next beat, jump your agenda, let's say.
Okay. There is a timeline, I'm just going to say.
What's the timeline?
Uh, we have, so the, it ended up opening November sixth and January ninth it does end, I know we'll see each other before then, but.
Mondays.
Okay, so now that, that is going to be for the Dirt Roads.
Yeah.
Right, uh, they have a part in the Dirt Roads grant for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a grant for equipment related to dirt roads. The town does not have a dirt roller, and I figured this would be a good opportunity that.
A bit greater?
No, no, it's a dirt roller. This would be a good tool and a good way to get a roller, since we have dirt roads in town for the town. The price comes out under what, the two hundred and fifty, we could get a roller for about one eighty. And that would be brand new warranty.
Is that a single drum, eight ton roller?
There you go.
Looking at?
Yep.
We had in there seventy-five K was what.
Used. You can get a used one anywhere from fifty to seventy-five, but if you want something that's going to break down and we have to work on all the time, I don't even have a garage to even work on the stuff, it won't fit in the garage, you know, so that's the problem.
Get a grant paper.
That's, that's why I'm, I don't want to wait too long on this one.
Yeah.
There's other communities that are chasing us or, you know, competing against us, so that would be good to get taken care of.
Yeah.
Those just followers are, you're leaving with us?
No, I'm taking those.
Oh, you're taking.
Why, you want me to leave stuff with you, or I'll just tell you.
You said you were going to leave.
I can, I can.
Should you just give a name?
We need to review it to make. I can make, I don't think so either.
Just bring it in with it.
Okay. Uh, I already went over the work that we ended up doing to the Beach Hill Bridge. The municipal bridge update form, I got to submit that to the state. I followed it step by step, ended up putting all the information in that they need, I'll be submitting that tomorrow to Mark, so I'll be updated. I would like next week if we could talk about road bonding, I have a whole file put together, it's going to numerous vendors. I'd like to end up pushing this forward, have you guys take a look at it and see if we have legal maybe. Let's, let's put something together from what I put together, so that would be good too.
Makes good sense.
The last thing, the bathroom highway.
Yeah.
That's going to be finished up December first. So as of right now, the plumbing that was broken underground, that was deteriorating, it was clay pipe, that got all replaced, Mark and Connor were in there working nonstop, they ended up getting tied into the septic system, we had Potte come in, he did the building inspection, he okayed everything, so Mark poured actually the concrete on the weekend, so it's settled, and then Connor's going to be coming in, updating the black pipe for the, all the plumbing, and hopefully we'll have a toilet and our sink working by Christmas time, so.
Married for.
Yeah, I'm running out of tubs of towels, those things are like thirty-five dollars a tub, I already went through a whole case of them, so that would be good to get that taken care of.
That's great, right.
I do have one invoice here for Mark already, because he's done with his part of the bathroom, so I did receive that today. I don't know if we can process that yet, I know we had talked about the financing.
Well, okay, I know it's there.
The money's there, because I know I got the paperwork that you signed and you end up doing the transfer, yeah, for the building. So on the building, building maintenance is, has it in, thank you, correct? One last.
Should be in.
I will, tomorrow. One, one more thing, so while Aaron Potte was inside doing his inspection, it got brought up that our backflow meter ended up failing at the Highway Garage when, in May, when we had it inspected. So backflow meter prevents the water going back into the drinking supply that supplies the townspeople on North Lampard. While they were talking, while Potte was talking about it, Connor was standing right there, I said, look, I don't know anything about backflow meters, but can you take a look at it, because I know it's something you guys have to do, you know, the plumbers. Uh, he says it was beyond repair, it's been repaired multiple times already, and it would just be better to replace the meter in general. So I ended up asking Connor how much it would end up being for updating the meter. If fourteen hundred dollars, replace the meter, and by state law, you need to have a rebuild kit, every single building that has a backflow meter. So hopefully the fire, town hall, library, all these buildings should have a rebuild kit on the, somewhere in the building for emergency rebuild on the backflow meters that have city water. But ours has failed, and since we have the plumber there, I'd like to get that taken care of, so we're up to code, because I was informed that if the EPA find, they're going to start fining when the backflow meters aren't up to code.
Fourteen hundred dollars.
Exactly.
Get it done.
So, yeah, I was going to get that taken care of too.
Own budget? Yeah, you can take it from your own budget.
I'll take it out of highway repair or something for now, but I didn't know if the town.
You gotta do it, you gotta do it.
Yeah.
You know? EPA don't care how deep your pockets are.
No.
But it failed in May and we're only talking about it at the end of November?
I didn't, I didn't even know, I guess the guy that did the test got fired or quit from the water department. Help me out here.
Yeah, Mike here was doing the test.
Mike here, so I, I don't have a contact with him or talking to him, but I was informed that that's who was doing, so.
Get the new meter and get it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
All righty, thank you, are you good?
Just run down my little notes here, one, one last thing that I'm going to end up asking you about. Thanksgiving is Thursday.
Yeah.
Is, is the town hall open on Friday?
Yes.
Okay, so everyone's going to be here Friday?
You mean, your department first? Well, she was.
Well, I didn't, okay, all right, no, because some of the guys were asking if they could take Friday off or if we had Friday off, and I said, look, let me just ask.
Is it on the, well, a different one?
I don't think it's on the list.
No, it's not, I don't think it's on the list, so they were asking if they could take vacation time, but I told them, I said, look, that's your own time.
Right.
This isn't, you know, anything.
Unless there's a storm or something like that.
Of course, and I, I said that to them, I said that to them earlier, I said, look, you know, if you did have the day off.
If you think you can have a lot and they take their own vacation.
Okay.
Got it.
All right.
Anything else? Okay, we're going to see you Monday anyway, so.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yes, I think that will think that will do for now.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay. Next is review and sign acceptance of receipt and release for the Sumner W. Robbins revocable trust. Actual care of North Lampard Cemetery.
Same here. So is there any beginning what's not?
Again, I hear you, everybody.
For one time payout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was all part of the state.
I was left, but.
He's a nice guy.
Very nice. Very nice. A motion to accept it?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have.
Checking.
The final.
Yes, how much is it? What is it?
Two ninety, I think. Two hundred and ninety.
I don't want to miss quote.
I, that's what she does it. Many papers.
It's not on the front.
Thank you, Donna, the last.
Oh, in the letter. Sorry.
Each. Two hundred and thirty.
Two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Need to. You just need one signature.
No, you have to witness.
All right, next is accept the two twenty, two thousand twenty-six Lampard Country Club annual liquor license.
Review it, yeah.
So if I could just say, I'm getting ready, I think both paid, Adam is doing his thing, and I'm just getting ready to put the actual license together and send it to the state, so you guys could just say, okay, vote.
Okay.
When I have the actual license, I'll just give it to you for signature.
Okay, let's do both of these.
Yeah.
The other one is the twenty twenty-six Lampard Country Store annual liquor license.
So.
Second, that motion, a motion to accept both.
Yeah, second.
Any questions? All in favor? Hey, let's try to go through the process.
Only if she brings martinis one night, right?
Right.
They're free too, aren't they?
Of course.
All right, let's.
Well, you marry.
All right, move on to new business, you have a presentation from the advisory committee and climate leader, committee designation.
Oh my God, he's serious. Taking off. You're ready. Good evening.
All right.
Good evening, good, good.
Good.
Okay, I just have folders passed out. Doctor and Sam. The first document is the report that Paul's been presenting, second one has.
Sure, Barry would like, oh, that's right there.
Second document is responses to the concerns of the town that Christina, that after speaking with the town attorney, long time.
The first of the year. With CLT, is that what that is?
This is the, yeah, this is the report that Paul's been at this rate, and this is our, our responses, and then the last is, is just an email from, that I received from Chris Mason, he's the Green Community Coordinator for Western Massachusetts, because we were concerned about the effect of the temporary moratorium for bad, you know, energy systems and immersion, so, so he was just saying that our town.
That's the point is, yeah.
Okay. It's all yours.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody, thank you for coming. The committees charged, the scope of work, item one, require the committee to research the requirements, application process, and steps necessary to obtain climate leader community designation. Committee fulfilled this element using the resources of the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, climate leader website, conversations with the regional representative Christopher Mason, and other towns that have navigated the process and successfully achieved the status of climate leader community. Element two of the scope of the work was to identify potential implications, both administrative and financial for the town if it were to pursue this designation, goals achieved through the same means I had one. Element three of the scope of work required the committee to gather examples and lessons learned from other Massachusetts communities that have obtained or pursued this designation. As well as fill the same means as I had one. Element four required a report of the committee findings and recommendations without making or implying any formal commitment by the town to pursue or apply for the designation, which is element four. Pros and cons, as a committee, we unanimously agree that the climate leader status opens the door to grant money to fund both engineering and projects that will allow the town to save money for the taxpayer. While the adoption of the specialized entry code for new construction is a requirement that does add cost to new residential homes who choose to use fossil fuels, the following points sum up the overwhelming benefits of the climate new status. Only new construction is affected by the specialized entry code. Only new construction is affected by the specialized energy code. Being climate leader community opens the possibility for planning grants and new infrastructure, example, PV solar. Building codes may become stricter in the future, so take action now while grant funding is still available. Electric rates will become increasingly expensive in the future, so get ahead of the rise in rates. We will guard and pay taxes and should take advantage of taxpayer-funded grants. That can have long-term financial benefits for the town, for example. Just the year twenty twenty-five, the town paid sixty-two thousand one hundred eighty-seven dollars and eleven cents for electric power. And seventy-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars forty-one cents for fuel wood. Grants can reduce and possibly eliminate these costs, provide some degree of self-reliance and energy independence. Climate leader status will fund grants to install PV solar. Which will provide free energy, at this time, the green community grants do not fund PV solar assaults. The process to apply, the steps for Lambert to achieve the climate leader status are the same for every town, the best model for the. Process that we could determine was that of Asheville. Asheville is a town of about seventeen hundred residents and in many ways is similar to Plantford. Department of Energy Resources lists six steps to become a climate leader community, it's a brief overview. The elements, step one is to be a green community in good standing, which Blanford is at this time, municipalities with temporary moratoriums. On the permitting of ground bounded solar PV systems and/or battery energy storage systems remain in good standing pending the outcome of the temporary. Step two requires the establishment of an advisory committee for the purpose of advising the town and coordinating clean energy activity. Makeup of the committee may include representatives from the town's departments such as public safety administration, transportation and town residents. For example, Asheville had four volunteers, Palom, another small town of thirteen hundred people consists of three volunteers. The remaining four steps would be the responsibility of the committee established in step two to reach out to the town residents and departments. To understand needs and concerns culminating into town meeting to vote on committing to three things. Decarbonization of municipal buildings and vehicles by twenty fifty. Two-zero emission vehicle first policy and three adoption of the specialized energy code. Once the town has voted and passed these three warrant articles, the state will provide the resources to help the committee create a decarbonization roadmap. To achieve the goal of net zero by twenty fifty. This will complete the requirements to apply for the climate leader community. And we have many examples of documents that Nashville used for that process. The funding options are dependent on the program opportunity notices found at combies dot com often offered by the Department of Energy Resources. PV solar is integral to the substitution of fossil fuels to reduce emissions and provide a twofold benefit. One, locally sourced and sustainable power, and two, a predictable cost structure that is independent of utility grid rates. The second point implies the value of PV solar will increase as utility grid costs increase. Ground source heat pumps could replace fossil fuel furnace, oil furnaces for heat and hot water powered by PV solar. Grants for analysis and design are found on the ponds, in the ponds on the combined uh website. Funding is not subject to clawback as long as it's used for the designated purpose. Ponds appear to have latitude and award criteria and may or may not have a ten percent match requirement. Town funding is not necessarily required for the million dollar accelerator grants. The decarbonization. The decarbonization goal can be achieved using a gradual approach that addresses trigger events such as necessary replacement of vehicles. Weapon roofs, et cetera. The zero emission vehicle first policy is based on the availability of a suitable zero emission vehicle that does not exceed the budget. For a comparable internal combustion engine version. Uh considering available rebates. It's important to acknowledge that all aspects of the climate leader program are voluntary. And the town can opt out of the climate leader community program and its requirements at any time. An observation, although not specific to the scope of this committee, it is worthwhile to note that as a green community, Blanford is eligible for grants. Some example projects are EV charging station, funds for hybrid, uh plug-in hybrid and battery electric vehicles, weatherization and more. These grants can provide community enhancements that future climate leader projects will benefit from and build on. In summary, the overall process requires volunteers, possibly the service of some paid town employees for the ordinarily required. Services associated with a town meeting, notifications, preparation of warrants and working with the committee to provide input. To the process involves. Return is significant funding that is designed to reduce dependence on fossil fuels, promote energy independence. And reduce operational costs for the town of Blanford and its taxpayers. Eventually, the carrots. Will disappear and electrification will become a mandate, we should be in front of it, not behind it, said the chair then. Of all which Massachusetts, and then you'll see there's a list of supporting documents that. You know, if you wanna dig into the details or all of it.
All this is a mouthful, that's a lot to absorb, right?
Well, sure, it was, it was quite a bit to go through, to analyze and, and organize.
Yeah.
Can I be devil's advocate now or wait? Okay, alright. What this. Is setting up is a monopoly for the electric companies, okay? Right now, they use fossil fuels to create the energy, okay? As from what I understand, with solar and wind turbine, that is not a. Substantial uh supply otherwise. The batteries last forty-eight hours, that so up here in Blanford, okay? We don't have brownouts, we have total blackout, wires come down. Every household. Has at least two or three different types of energy to keep their houses warm. If we rely upon electricity. And the wires go down, the last ice storm was about two weeks before people had power. Thank god they had generators and they burned wood, so. Going totally green as they, they call it. How is that gonna work in, in rural towns, in, in the hills like this? We don't have. Like all this battery stuff and solar, big solar fields, they're not helping Blanford or any other small town. They're supplying energy to the big cities, alright, that's the whole basis, is take care of the big cities. Alright, so. How, how is this gonna help us if we're all relying on electricity? I mean, there's a lot of infrastructure here that we're talking about and I'm not putting you guys down or anything, I think it's great where you did. I, I was on a green community committee too, but I'm looking out for the people who live in the hill towns. If you don't have solar on your house. That's the only way it's gonna help us here and how many people in Florida and the government is not legally. Supposed to take. Our tax money and use it for private homes, even though they do. So, I mean, there's a lot of questions here, and like I told you guys when you started, you know, you've gotta ask a lot of questions. So what's the alternative for small towns?
TJ, if I could just say.
Go ahead.
Say something like that, that it's important to know that this only affects new construction, so if you have. An oil furnace or propane or anything now, it's, you're, you're okay, it's no.
Right, until, until two thousand fifty. That's, that's the legislature declares, two thousand fifty, we're gonna be green.
Well, that's the, that's the goal.
That's the goal.
That's the goal, as far as it, the, the only major thing would be like new construction. But even a new construction, it doesn't mean it all has to be electric, you know, you can still have fossil fuel things if you want. But you have to have the provision for uh for electric, solar. If you, you know, you know, it doesn't say you have to completely eliminate all the, all the fossil fuels. You do have to, there are certain requirements for liquidification, you have to have, you know, a provision for. You know, uh electric uh. Yeah, um yeah, so that's, you know, that's what I'm saying, that's what's not really preventing people's.
There, there is a, there is a clause in this uh in new construction, if you put an addition on. You don't have to do anything to the new uh. Code unless you put on an addition that's bigger than a thousand.
I just gotta say just one other thing, I think it's important since, since commercial solar, commercial battery has been um. A controversial, say the least, it's important, it's important to understand that um. That, that this is basically for, for municipal, this is, this is not, doesn't have anything to do with commercial. Solar or batteries, this is. Grant funding, which the town could use to provide energy uh. Standing initiatives, so it's basically, this is basically all for the municipality. And uh, and, and the other thing is that although there are some requirements for new construction. Uh it's important, think, if you're thinking of the taxpayers that. Everybody, everybody now in their current state is okay, there's all requirements for them to do anything. Uh e- even as far as I know, you know, by two thousand fifty, it doesn't say everybody has to get rid of their own furnaces. It's just new construction, so, so for like ninety-nine point five percent of the people in Blanford. This would be something to reduce their taxes and there it, there, there possibly if, if. Somebody from outside was coming and wanted to build a new house or something, they, they would be affected by this. But they would probably be affected in most other towns by, by that town too, there's a lot of towns are going this climate theater. Theater group, so.
So, if I could, if I could. I mean, I can envision that, I, I think what you're saying is, let's just take this building as an example. We need a new roof. We pay a lot of money to keep this thing, so you're saying something like that, they need to do a grant. Right, that's where you go.
Hundred sixty thousand for engineering, up to a million dollars for the actual process.
Right, not necessarily just a new roof though, but if the new roof was required in order to have solar panels.
No, understood, understood, I would expect both, right? But I have, you know, I mean, I need to kinda like absorb, I had a whole bunch of questions as you were talking. To get clarity, more clarity for myself around it, I'm not really sure, what, what are you asking for tonight?
Well, tonight was just the presentation.
And that's it. So, absorbing the information, then we'll come back and take a look at it, or what's the next step?
Yes. And now it's in front of the board to decide if you wanna take those specific requirements to town meeting to have the town vote. If you want to do the new stretch energy code, zero emissions, all of that.
Right, and I would, and what I would wanted to go is lay it out in a simplistic way. Now, this is simplistic, I'm saying in order for people to really understand the difference between this and what we're dealing with, let's figure solar like that's.
Very good. I excluding the uh, the major uh large scale solar and best batteries and that. This would have to be presented before town meeting. So that everybody understands what this is, to present it at town meeting and just read it off. You can't do that, I'm gonna have to have a special meeting for this. Like we did before, when I was on the green community committee, we had a meeting where it was an information meeting. And everything was explained due to questions and that, and a lot of questions that. We couldn't have to be brought back to the door to get the answers from.
Right, there's six steps, we have the first one, we're green community good standing, right, we would also need to have a. Committee, green community, uh committee.
We're not really.
Really ad hoc committees, I get ahead.
Let us just step back and absorb it.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
And then I would, I would suggest that. Once, once the three of us are kinda going through it.
Do you have any questions?
Proceed and say, we may have some questions, right?
Yeah, sounds good, thank you. Oh wait, oh wait, I got ahead, uh let's cheer God.
I have a question about um, so we're like. Are we dissolved uh at the, at the time, I mean, we don't really have.
You're not dissolved in any way.
But I mean, what are we gonna be continuing to meet for if we already presented and we're just waiting for you to get back?
You're gonna have to follow like I have to, uh with the door, uh any new things that come up, remember. They set up a pattern, alright, like, like you have the six steps, okay? And that's gonna change. They, this doesn't stop, yeah, I mean, you made a good presentation, but you're gonna have to keep. Your, your ears open for any changes that come, because they are gonna come.
But, I mean, I wanna be clear, what you're saying though, for my own sake, what you're saying though is that you're asking. Does the town feel that this is of. Of uh an initiative that we want to start supporting and put together a town committee. To focus on this, and they would be the ones.
Yeah.
Wanna keep up with everything, you guys have done your diligence.
Yes, I mean, we may or may not be part of that.
That's right.
Committee can, can be opposed to a lot of different stuff, but what I'm wondering is now um that. Are, what we were supposed to do was to look into this and then make a presentation to you and then you would. Consider whether you wanted to go.
Right, and I don't feel comfortable making a decision one way or the other, until I absorb it, right, I mean, at the end of the day. You guys know from one of the other types.
Yeah, and, and you guys have the contact, it balls in your court, folks.
So I just don't. I don't know if you're expecting us to continue to have meetings, because I'm not sure what we could be meeting.
Well, all we're, all, all we're asking is that you keep your ear to the ground, you know, you know, you know the contact, you have the contact. Alright, so if something comes up, you know, i- if, it would be appreciated by us.
Right.
That, you know, you, you may remain in contact, you don't have to have meetings that just kinda, keep your ear to the ground. Because other than. Once you have your presentation. We can't dump it on the town administrator team, she's got her hands full now, so it's, it's just a courtesy. That to ask you to uh just keep your.
Well, let me just say that you might wanna keep in mind that there is certain opportunities to become a, a climate leader community. And there's others, they have like twenty-one, twenty, nineteen or so, I think there's another batch from the beginning, what's the next date?
I, it might be the end of the year when they.
So there might be another opportunity, so there's gonna be competition for the money, so.
I understand.
Yes, I have one question, because the, in, in fact, this town already has an energy committee, right, to deal with the commercial solar. So forth, so that, that potentially could be.
Potential, they, they already have, they're overwhelmed, we're right now.
Yeah, well, I can, I can imagine, just saying, you already have a bid, and then the question would be whether you wanna. Create another, in which case you have to officially appoint.
It's really whether in a town, you know, again, board has to look at this a little deeper to understand it more. It's been a while since we discussed it, uh and if we have further questions, I would wanna be able to. And if we have further questions, I would want to be able to wrap back around and have you guys come in and answer those questions for us. That would be the next step, I think.
There's one more thing that I want to say, and that is, it is. The document about town concerns regarding CLC stacks that's in your folder. At the end of that, there's an appendix A. And it takes you to the Ashfield PDF file. And it shows every step that they took, all like what you were talking about TJ, all the town meetings and the articles in the case. If you want to understand what they had to go through, that would be the, the one to look at. It's just, it was twenty four pages long, so I didn't want to turn it out for everybody.
I don't blame you.
I didn't know.
Do towns in the, in Massachusetts are currently under this, I mean, the great communities, they push.
Yeah.
How many towns are?
Nineteen right now, but a lot more that are looking to gain that designation.
In similar size, Ashfields, Fenton, rural, those three are, that's just about like that stuff.
Alright, thank you, well, thank you very much for doing all this work.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, alright, we're gonna to, we're gonna skip over the library director discussion just for a moment. And to OPD grant reallocation contract amendment with water department. Yeah.
Uh-oh, very personal.
Thank you, Lucy.
Alright. My name, sorry.
Alright.
Alright. Want to just quick update this again and what this is?
Sure, so the, the town has a grant, parent grant from the executive office of economic development. Rural Development for three hundred fifty thousand dollars, water department to do three projects. Design of a water storage tank, design of a booster pump station, and some water main design and construction. And it, fiscal year twenty five contract from the Commonwealth to, to do this work. My name is Mike McManus with Wright Peers. We're currently underway with the design of the storage tank and the booster pump station. Booster pump station also has the design of the water main replacements. But that's the, you know, so of the three hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, a hundred and twenty five thousand was allocated for construction of a water. Not likely going to happen this fiscal year. And there was another grant application to the rural development. That for next fiscal year that was denied, which was for replacements, construction of replacement. Construction of a new ozone treatment system, add water treatment. Yeah, right, that's part of the consent, the free consent order that the town is under from DEP. So, and, but as part of that, fiscal year twenty six. Grant, the town did get eighty thousand dollars to design a new raw water inlet, which is also part of that DEP consent order. So we collectively spoke with rural development, with EOEED. And said, there's this portion of the fiscal year twenty five grant that might not get spent. And so that it doesn't get lost, could the town reallocate that to the design of the ozone zone treatment system? They said it sounds, it sounds reasonable within the, the contract and framework of the initial grant. So there is a contract amendment request form that they, they want the town to submit. To ask to take that hundred twenty five thousand dollar grant and reallocate it to ozone design. But also part of that would be design and construction of inlet screener. The basket strainer, if you remember that.
Yeah.
That pool filter basket strainer, that would also be included, which was also part of the consent order. So if the town does this, it goes into the state, the state approve it. There'd be revisions to the contract, the town would be assigned. And then the tax report with design to meet all of DEP's consent order requirements.
We can copy the consent order.
Yeah, we got, okay, yes. And we did, so we also had a meeting with DEP recently where we gave them an update. And so the consent order is an administrative consent order right now. It's like, these are the things you have to do. There are, you know, these associated with the administrative consent order. I think it was ten, there were ten items, done seven, almost done seven. The seventh would be completion of the state project that's, that's undergoing. But DEP at this point is saying, you've shown good progress. We're gonna put milestone dates for those remaining three items, and they'll finalize a consent order.
We, okay, for this, let's just, we'll just go ahead and do this one, so. Alright, so I make a motion to approve this reallocation of contract amendment. Any discussion? Oh, group?
Aye.
Couple things, Dan still owes Sarah, our treasurer, the information of how much more needs to be done on this data project. So we understand the finances of that.
He didn't sign, was it?
He did, okay, okay, sorry. And this is just for the design phase, right? And when you talked to EK, did they say anything about approving the grant that we wanted in the ozone?
So the design will give you a good price.
Okay.
The, the goal is to have it done before the next grant site.
Okay.
So that you can put that price in the grant. And, yeah, we didn't have a very accurate price, whatever it was, pardon problem.
Okay. Okay. We're all set. Now, do you get this back, or do you get this back?
Well, Jasmine submitted it, it's, I want to try to get this picture, it's also identified.
Alright, anything else you guys?
Nope.
Thank you.
That's, Steve said you didn't like it, so we're gonna move back to the library.
Okay, yeah, next up is the library director, Nicole, to give an update on the library expansion project. So, okay, Nicole.
Hi, hi, so I just wanted to give a quick update about where we are on the expansion project. As you know, we submitted our plans, the MPLC mid-October, and they were reviewed by their independent consultants. And get back to us with no changes. So we are ready to go from the MPLC for that project as is designed. We were the first community to submit that by months, which is really wonderful. So we've come in quite ahead of schedule, even for our own schedule, not even the state's schedule. So we are in a really good position with that. And then we had to, to work with the architect on creating a budget with the independent reviewer. For like calculating costs, AM Quobert, which is a company that they hired to do the budget work. We went through many iterations of this budget based on reviews that we did along the way. So I went through all twenty four, twenty six pages of the budget line by line. To make sure that every single thing was something that the library needed to have. Was appropriate for the scale of what we were doing, and was also priced to the best it could be. And after tearing through the budget, they had to resubmit it because we took it out and altered quite a few things that just didn't need to be there. They were like key boxes, mats, things that just were not essential for the library project. So they resubmitted it, gave it back to us, we went through it multiple times again. And then had it to a point where we knew that the budget would accommodate all of the needs of the library. Has money set aside for cost escalation over the timeline of this project, which right now is at about two years from now when it will be completed. And also contingencies that are set at the standard amount for the trade, which is five percent for owner's contingency. And ten percent for design contingency. So if there's something that we weren't able to foresee, that money is there for us to be able to use it. Out of the amount of money that we had the, the budget written for, can you just pull up the exact number so I can make sure I'm giving you the right ones? The state covers seventy five percent of eligible building costs. That seventy five percent came up to be a five million, four hundred and seventy nine thousand, five hundred and thirty nine dollars. So that is a pretty huge amount that the state is going to grant to us. We do not, this is not competitive grant at this point. They guaranteed that we would be given this money if we pass the design phase and if our community accepts it at town vote. So we are guaranteed to get this funding in this amount if the town's people of Blanford vote for it at the special town meeting that we hope to be having on December ninth. That money, you know, obviously doesn't cover the entire cost, it's seventy five percent, leaving the remainder for our community to cover. At one million, one hundred and sixty six dollars, or one hundred and sixty six thousand, six hundred and twenty two dollars. So the number is one comma, one six six comma, six two two. So because of the amazing work that Dr. Hopson has done over the last year, ensuring that the town is well positioned for this. Because we were able to come up with a building that was within the scope of what we had initially set out to do for the budget. The town is now in a position where there is no estimated tax increase for any residents for this project to be fully funded. No tax increase whatsoever. So initially, Dr. Hopson had been planning on this and had planned for a number slightly higher than that. The reason that we have a number even lower is because of some unexpected generosity to our community and to our libraries specifically. Sumner Robbins and Sally Robbins previously had been generous with the library and given a nice amount of trust funds to the library years ago when Sally passed away. When Sumner passed away in, I think it was July of twenty twenty four, June, oh, it was April, I'm so sorry. April of twenty twenty four. He left in his trust, we just recently found this out, about eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That he specifically wrote in there to be used for the Porter Memorial Library Expansion Project.
Wow.
So amazing, yes, it is absolutely amazing. Every time I say it, I just, I can't even, I can't even process it. So, that generosity is what brought down the town's portion of this project to the one million, one hundred and sixty six thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars. It covered almost half of the town's portion, which is just unbelievable. So we are in deep, deep gratitude to Sumner and Sumner Robbins.
We'll put his name somewhere.
The trustees were thinking the Sally and Summer Robbins community room.
Yeah.
Because that seems fitting for his role in Blanford and his love of the library and the community that the library has supported. Isn't that amazing? Yes, so we, so now we have, we have building design that the MPLC has proofed of that was created by the community and by our town team. We have the funding lined up from the MPLC and this five and a half million dollar grant. We have eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars from Sumner. The trustees have generously given another ten thousand dollars to this project from their funding. So now it's nine hundred thousand dollars from trustee and, and Summer Robbins trust funding. And the town is, I'm a book for an amount that will not increase taxes at all. So that, that was my mission today, to come here and tell you that. But if you have any questions.
Oh, Steve?
Oh, oh, yes, yes, I'm so sorry, thank you, Christina, I'm so excited to be able to share. We have the warrant for your signing and approval. This was created by Dave Hopson, read over by counsel, approved by legal, signed by Chris.
Our legal bond counsel, as it said.
Do you want me to read the warrant, or would you like to just read it so that you can see all of the glorious legal?
Done, we'll read it.
Okay.
So we have like a blowout of the financials on this, like a real, I know you do.
I, I.
Dave, do you want to come up here?
Yeah, have you talked treasury and stuff too, or anything like that?
Christina and I talked to Sarah today.
Okay.
Just to take. I can estimate, and that's all we can do at this point.
Right.
That's been out of the bids, but the actual final possible be, in order to we know timing or when we'll have. Estimation is in this vote twenty seven, we'll have various money, fine, our fine. And that reason is because SBA being versus on a five year schedule, four year schedule. So we're, our building, thanks to all this on, and it's good, we're recording these. So we'll need to pay money ahead of time, then reverse from state. So we all, if you said done, says not, if we continue to, as told, continue to put a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars in stabilization for the next couple of years. Will be in really decent shape. The question will be, how much we have to borrow, we have to borrow that, what final amount is the bond? And talking with Sarah and Christina today, may not even want to bond that amount, may want to just continue that payment off. Done with it, bonded, because that would allow us to have more reserve for other things that we have.
Right, I was just gonna say that, same thing.
Like fire department, this building, roof on gateway buildings.
Right.
Other stuff that has capital plan. So we did talk to Sarah about giving the appropriate paperwork done in decent shape. So the real question, to be honest. When we get all of that money, how we, how we temporarily borrow that money? And one of the things that Sarah said today was, if we have this amount of money from Dr. Robson. Do we use that, when do we use that to pay down? And at this point, it looks like you could potentially invest that money at a higher rate and borrow money. So it'd be better off to invest that money and pay it off at the end, but, but those are all things that have, have to go through the process. So as Nicole said, next step, next, next week they'll do an informational session. Then soon after you sign the warrant, they, it's supposed to tomorrow, be the night of the, of the town meeting. And the warrant is to authorize up seven point five million dollars borrowing, but we'll come nowhere near that.
So we just need to make sure we explain to people how.
You first.
That, that even though the warrant is written for that seven point five million, they're not, that's not what the town is paying.
I understand it.
We just need to make sure that.
Are you gonna go through all that at the town meeting?
Thank goodness.
We'll go through all the information session, and then if there are specific questions at town meeting, I'm sure it's on.
Thank you so much for your support through this whole process.
Thank you for your hard work.
Yes.
Incredible stuff.
The team did a fantastic job with this project.
Really. We are so grateful.
You're looking to take out the department.
I, when I have wrapped my mind around, I hope, to Sumner and Sally. When, I am more than happy when the library project is well underway and things are then checked off the list and cleared off the plate. I, I feel like it is the least I can do for the community of Blanford to help with the fire department in any way possible to experience a D P this project.
So we signed already, but I didn't do a motion. A motion to approve, I motion to approve warrant in the amount of. I don't have, is this?
It is on the sheet that it was just taken through, maybe somebody don't need a motion, don't need a.
Seven point five mil.
I can actually give you right now, hold on, I've got this number right here, seven million, five hundred and forty six thousand, one hundred and sixty one dollars. So seven, five, four, six.
Motion to approve seven million, five hundred and forty six thousand, one hundred and sixty one dollars for the library project.
Second.
Any questions?
No.
All approved. Alright.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sunder saved the day.
Oh. Great guy. Did you ever get the note?
I don't think so. What's next on the agenda? We're waiting for the town administrator because she wants to request approval for a couple of things.
Yeah, we got the special town meeting mark. Just it.
Just it.
That was it?
That's it.
That was it.
Any public comment? We can do that down before she comes back. That was it. And I think.
I am still confused. I'm tired of life.
Okay, you wanna talk about the next step is request authorization for the list Sunday.
So, yeah, so that's actually appears twice on here, on revenue business and under town administrator, so let's just get right to some of the issues. Okay.
Oh, yeah, we talked with them.
Okay, so I've had several meetings with both conservation and planning. And as everybody knows, there was a vote to approve up two hundred thousand dollars to go towards the efforts of. The revision of our bylaws and everything to do with the citing solar and large energy products and Glanford. So I am requesting the select board make two motions tonight. The first motion would be that the select board vote to authorize the planning board to access an initial thirty thousand. From the previously approved two hundred thousand set aside under article four of the special town meeting. Which requires select word approval for any expenditures and this thirty thousand will support the planning board in conjunction. With the energy project citing and engagement committee and addressing pending and future commercial solar battery energy storage applications. So it's for the planning board to have this funding available for them to go out and seek outside professional services for the revision. And updating of our bylaws.
I motion to approve the thirty thousand dollars to come out from that account of two hundred thousand dollars. In support of the planning board and to. Any questions?
So the second request is, I was trying to work in a way that I could have. Administrative support for both planning and conservation under the umbrella of the conservation agent role that we already have established. That didn't work out. So the other option is we take a number at your discretion, I would say anywhere between ten and fifteen thousand. Again, from that twenty.
Yeah.
For the planning board to go and seek outside administrative services. From that two hundred, yep, sorry. So that they can get what they need for administrative support for the time being, but. The caveat, I don't know who we forward when we do budget season, if you guys wanna consider an administrative support position for planning. But right now we can't do that, so my recommendation is that money come from that two hundred thousand so that planning can get the services they need.
Now. Just, what, where are they looking to get information for the bylaw?
I don't know. That's the planning board, we have to speak to their.
Wait, wait, hold on. You already voted on the planning board, you're not discussing.
No, we're still talking about planning. For planning, right, and then so the next, for the, for the, for the outside services, they're both for planning. Both of these are for planning. Conservation already has their. Their money. Where are they going? I don't know. It's up to them, it's up to their discretion. They can use P V P C. As far as administrative services and support, I don't think that's a huge role that's giving away too much control to another company to make decisions. So I think for the administrative support, I think it makes sense for them to reach out to P V P C for administrative support. As far as their outside professional services, who they seek, again, I would defer to the planning board.
Okay.
For them to make that decision on their own. But they're working in conjunction with the next step.
Okay.
So.
So the motion is to vote to take an additional fifteen thousand. For supporting the planning board with an administrative role. Until the new season.
I would say it's the end of the morning.
The end of the morning, Florida?
Yeah.
Well, up to you. It's up to you guys, this.
I would rather, I would rather.
Until the money is expended.
Right, until the money is expended.
Yeah.
Alright, I motion to approve that fifteen thousand, about the two hundred thousand. Any questions?
No, second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Alright. You're gonna send that on the panel?
Well, there was a couple of other things on that one. If anybody signs up for the notices for, that the Department of Public Utilities sends out. You will have noticed that's a notice of filing, public hearing and request for comments was sent. This is not specific to Glanford. This is the D P U reviewing EverSource's three-year energy plan term report. It's not specific to Glanford in any way, but in regards that I did draft public comment to submit to the D P U.
This is basically grading.
Yeah, they're, yeah, yeah. So I will be sending this if you want me to read, I don't, I don't think I'm gonna read it. But it'll be available on our website as well. And then just a general update, some of the things that I, you've talked about in recent. Couple weeks, one of which was the unregistered motor vehicles. I just wanna get everybody on the same page. We do not have the necessary statutory language for us to issue non-criminal disposition fines. For unregistered motor vehicles, can't do it. So.
Why is that?
Because you never adopted the bylaw language. The bylaw as it stands right now does not have the language necessary. For non-criminal disposition fines to be. We also don't have the bylaw that would allow you to attach it to taxes either. So number one, you can't issue the fine in the first place. In a non-criminal disposition matter for, for this, right? You can issue it for snow and ice removal because it's in the snow and ice removal bylaw. The language necessary is represented there. It's also represented in the assumption of marijuana. That bylaws where the language that's necessary to issue a non-criminal fine is in that, that language is in that bylaw. Is absent from the bylaw of unregistered motor vehicles.
So how do we get rid of it?
Well, what you can do is you can adopt the language in a, a future meeting so that you can issue these non-criminal disposition fines. But right now, the only way to remedy it is you would have to take the district court. So I just wanted to get everybody on the same page with that. So right now, we can't issue fines. I have spoken directly with Jason. He is aware of it. Tax classification hearing and setting the tax rate. Dave, can I bother you for a second?
Sure.
Okay, we were sent a list of dates to pick from.
Right.
For the classification hearing. Do you think December first is too soon?
No.
No. If it's okay with the board during our December first select word meeting. We will also hold the tax classification hearing.
Okay.
No, it's not.
Takes five minutes to tell you that.
I did have somebody, so I, I sent out, I'm moving on now, your subject, sorry. I sent out three requests for quotes to vendors on state contract for a roof assessment. In quotes for repairs. On Friday, John Hoppy met with the only person who replied to my request for quotes. Which was Rockwell Roofing. And their general consensus, I haven't gotten anything in writing yet, but their general consensus is you need to hold the roof for the skylights need to come out. Moving right along. I will wait until I get back something in writing to give to you guys, but I did say to them in reply, I understand that the general. Census here is that the whole roof needs to be replaced. With that being said, are there any repairs that you can suggest that maybe get us five more years? So that we can start putting money away towards like a roof or are there other more innovative? Ways to address our problems. He said that there are some fixes, he can't guarantee how long they would last us. But I don't have that information, it's not worth getting into a big discussion right now. Yeah, so that's what I did ask. I did ask, is there a way that you could do like some short-term repairs just to get us through? And he did say, so he's gonna come back to me with some more information, but when I, and when I have that information, I'll give it to you guys. But I think it was important to let you guys know that overall, needs new roof and the skylights, I guess, are a problem.
I don't know why they ever put flat roof in something.
I think a flat roof in New England is insane, but who might? I think for now, to keep things succinct, that's where I'll call it a day. And then you have. You have to motion to pause the meeting, not to reopen. Oh, wait, is there a public comment? Oh, sorry.
Motion to move into executive, I have a motion to move into executive session, executive session pursuant to. G L C thirty A, section twenty one, eight, three. To discuss strategy with respect to litigation, if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the litigation position of the public body. And chair, load declares twenty eight, twenty two.
Not to be, not to be.
Not to repeat.
Sorry.
Then I have to do a roll call.
Alright.
Oh, roll call, roll call then.
Roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call as it relates to.
You just, you say roll call in, Jackie Curry, yes.
Okay. In care of. So not any for you, Mr. Yeah. You're not reported, right?
No.
So cold.
It is, it's freezing.